Good evening. I will call to order the City West Bend Licensing Board for January 4th, 2021 at 6:25 PM. And note to that, all three of us are present. First up, please approve of the minutes. Number one, Licensing Board Regular Meeting Minutes for December 21st, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Oh, second, unless John wants to. Yep. I know it's a new committee for you. If there are no corrections, then all is in favor, send them by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then for our gen items for consideration, number two, Operator's License for Kelly Lynn Murphy. And we have a start with Captain Eric. Go ahead.
Good evening. Happy New Year to you all. Unfortunately, I come before you with the department's recommendation that you consider denying the permit application for the license, Operator's License for Ms. Murphy. Standard record check on couple two arresting convictions in the last five years that are concerning for the department. The first, on August 13th of 2017, in Hartford, 4:30 AM, a Hartford police officer was called to the downtown area for an intoxicated female. Their caller had reported the female had fallen. Ms. Murphy was located inside of her running vehicle by a Hartford police officer. After a brief conversation, she was asked to exit the vehicle and perform field sobriety tests. She was arrested for her third offense, OWI. Officer noted also that she resisted being taken into custody and was also charged with resisting an officer. She refused blood. A search warrant was obtained and her blood results came back at a .234% BAC. On September 28th of 2018, Ms. Murphy was found guilty of third offense to OWI. Charge of resisting an officer was dismissed but read into the record for sentencing. The second incident, June 29th of 2018, Dodge County deputies were dispatched to a tavern in the village of Eustisford for the report of a highly intoxicated female who had been kicked out of the tavern and had urinated on the front step prior to their arrival. Dodge County deputies arrived and located Ms. Murphy, who was uncooperative, provided at least twice false names to the deputies and eventually submitted to a preliminary breath test. Came back a .267. She was arrested for obstructing an officer, for providing the false information, which on August 28th of 18, she was found guilty, county ordinance citation for that. Based on those two incidences and what they represent, the department is concerned that Ms. Murphy will not be able to detect or enforce the over-serving of individuals and ensure the safety of our patrons and the citizens of the community.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy is in the audience, so if you'd like, you can come on up to the podium and let us know what's on your mind.
Hello, everyone. Yes, those things I am guilty of doing. In 2011, I did have my second offense of an OWI. At that point, with my third one, I knew that night I had too much to drink. I thought I made the smart choice to not operate the vehicle that night, but I did stay in my vehicle till 5:30 in the morning, I do believe, way past bar close because I knew I could not drive. I did attempt to try to walk to a friend's house and was too intoxicated to do so. I felt safest going back to my car, so that's what I did, and I stayed there. Someone did call me in. Yes, I did fall on the ground, and an officer did knock on my window. I could have thrown my keys somewhere else. I just didn't have anywhere else to go but feel safe in my car. But I do know I did not operate that night. I did go to jail for that for two weeks and spent three months on the bracelet. Ever since the night of the incident in Eustisford, I have not had a drop to drink. I've been to AA meetings. I have been to counseling. I have had an operating license for the past two years, or a year and a half, sorry, in the city of Oconomowoc. I was working at the Hilton full-time as a waitress and bartender. When COVID hit in March, I was laid off. The hotel industry went down. I was then called back at the end of July and laid off again in September. It's kind of the field that I am. I've been waitressing and bartending since I was 18 years old. So for the last 23 years, this is what I know and do. Prior to the Hilton, I've been at several supper clubs, the Blue Inn in Juneau, as a bartending manager there, and at the Wisco Supper Club in Leroy, Wisconsin. They would love to have me back as waitress. I would love to be back there, but there's just no spot for me with the limitations of how many people they can have in the restaurant right now. I'm just not a necessity right now. This opportunity I've been given here in West Bend, I went in applying for just a bartending job. The owner, his name is Chad, I don't know his last name, and the manager, Jessica, offered me a managing position, managing a new bar that is set to open in the next two weeks, the Saloon Royale Downtown West Bend. They saw something in me, and I was really excited to not just be a bartender anymore, but to actually do something else more important, more constructive, more responsibility. And I've been, I guess, employed there for the last three weeks, training on their POS system, learning how to become a manager, and just all the inventory and meeting all the vendors and everything, and everything that goes along with that. So don't think of this as just a bartending experience, but getting to do something more, challenging myself more, and working full-time and just throwing myself into the job. This is one of the big reasons I can go back to Oconomowoc and find something there because I do have a license there, but I don't know anywhere that's going to offer me this opportunity to manage my own restaurant and bar. It will also be a coffee shop, a martini bar, and have a gaming room and everything, and I will get to oversee all that and the employees and the payroll. And I just would like you to reconsider my past mistakes. And I know I'm standing here asking you to believe me that I have learned from them, and I have. I've been away from my children for two weeks, a couple years ago, three years ago now, it's 2021. And that will never happen again. And I would just like you to take all that into consideration. And thank you for letting me talk today and listen to me.
Thank you. You might want to stay up there in case anybody has any questions for you. Can we, do we have any way to verify that license in Oconomowoc? Do we check that when we do our records?
I do have a copy in my purse, if you'd like a copy of that.
But it's fine.
I did contact a clerk, and it is an active license at this time.
Okay. And I guess with that manager position, if you were to not have the Operator's License, do you feel like you could still perform that role, or what have they told you?
I would not be allowed to oversee the employees there without a operating license and deal with any of the vendors. All the vendors would need proof of my operating license.
Okay. I'll open up if there's any other questions amongst the licensing board.
I guess I just have this incidents that have happened here are, in my opinion, are pretty serious offenses. And you said you have turned yourself around. My feelings are, I guess, I feel like I would like to give you a break and pass this, only that if any incident would happen, obviously, we take this very seriously, and I, it would be not hesitant to pull your license immediately. You know, as long as you are straight and narrow, and you have beaten this ugly situation, I guess I would be willing to give you the opportunity to prove that you have turned yourself around.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
It says on your application that you're going to be working at Collins Deck Bar? You're not working there, then?
They own it. They're just a new bar that the owner had purchased, opens in a couple weeks. I didn't know the name of the new restaurant yet, and it's called the Saloon Royale.
Will you be working at Collins Deck Bar?
No. I guess maybe once in a while, if they need me to fill in as a manager, if someone can't come in. But normally, I would probably be there with someone else, I would think. But it is affiliated with one another, being that the same owner is purchasing, actually the Old Grasshopper Restaurant is being remodeled right now and opening in a couple weeks.
So Steph, just to clarify, is there any correction that we need to get made on the application, or is that suffice?
No, that is sufficient.
Okay. Then I would be looking for a recommendation.
I'll make a recommendation to accept the application.
And I will second. There's no other discussion. Again, this is just a recommendation that carries over to the full body here in just a moment. So I'll call for vote. All those in favor, send them by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll talk to you soon. And bearing it being no further business before the City West Bend Licensing Board, I will adjourn by the call of the chair. And I'll turn over to welcome and call to order the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for January 4th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Note that we do have all aldermen present and accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
... to the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
All right. We will begin by approval of the minutes. The Common Council Regular Minutes for December 21st, 2020. I'll note, though, as a correction, if we can remove my name from all of the ayes as I do not vote. And on the bike loop vote, I believe Alderman Dolnick and Berquist were nays. So if we can correct that as well.
Motion to approve with changes.
Second.
Thank you. My own Alan. Any other discussion or corrections?
Yeah, one.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I did not vote in the affirmative on the, let me get the exact terminology of the... The mayoral appointment of Joshua McCutcheon. And you asked for ayes, never asked for nays.
Oh.
And simply recorded as a successful voice vote.
Yeah, so we can mark you as a nay. And I'll open it up. Were there any other nays for that vote? Okay, we'll mark you down. Mark.
Thank you.
Then with those corrections, all is in favor, send them by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we have presentations. Number one, Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week for January 10th through the 16th, 2020. Did you have a presentation?
No.
Why don't you come on up? We'll call you on the spot. This is important.
Sorry, and prepared anything? But good evening again, and Happy New Year again. Obviously, as you're well aware, crossing guards are some of the most dedicated employee, part-time employees that we have, employees period. If you drive anywhere in the city, snowstorms, rainstorms, hot, cold, those people are out there and care tremendously every day that our children get to our schools safely. Beyond that, if you have any social media presence, when any of our school crossing guards retire, I'm always amazed at the response that comes across from people who said, well, they crossed me 10 years ago. They crossed my daughter. They have a special relationship. We, they gave cookies out at Christmas, or, you know, small gifts of candy, or my daughter's upset if her regular crossing guard isn't there. Doing exactly what we ask of our public servants, and that's being true servants to our community, not just showing up and holding a sign, establishing relationships with the children that they cross, with the parents of those children, and even with the neighborhood, people that don't have children. It's always amazing to me. So I thank you for taking the time to honor them tonight. Sorry we don't have any with us. Most of them are in a situation where they're concerned about our current pandemic, our age bracket. And my final thought would be to anyone listening at home, we are always, always looking for additional crossing guards. So if anyone out there is interested, please contact the Police Department. Ask to speak to Lieutenant Brian Scheringer, and he will get you set up, and we'd welcome you on our team, taking care of our citizens. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. All right. And with that, we'll move on to gen items for consideration. First, number two, adopt strategic plan. We had the presentation by Paul Robach last month, kind of giving us a summation of everything that our work had come to. Paul is again on, he should be virtually talking to us. So if we have any other questions or comments for him, he is there. Otherwise, we are just looking for an endorsement of that plan so administration can get to work.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is this what we're, is this the verbiage that we're agreeing to, or is there more to follow? In other words, it says it's an executive summary. So I don't know how we can approve an executive summary.
Well, you're endorsing the strategic framework that's listed in your packet there. So that's the mission statement, the strategic priorities, how we'll accomplish this, and the vision statement. And then really, it's up to administration then carry out that implementation, as Administrator Shambho had talked about last month.
Right. But before we have any additional verbiage that's adopted, that will come before us?
Correct. Yep. Yep. And that includes, I mean, from that process, we had a lot of, a lot of individual projects that we wanted to see get worked on. And so administration's ready to take that on, using that framework now as a, as a base. And Paul, now that we have you, do you have any other ideas or comments of how we can use this framework to, you know, to its optimal potential?
Yeah, I think you framed it very well, that the executive summary is kind of the high level. The full document was included in the last council packet, and it really does provide the framework for administration and the departments to start moving forward with and working towards implementation of the goals and the way in which you want to accomplish those goals. And the specific language has been developed over, as you're well aware, over multiple months through multiple surveys and in-person meetings. So I understand, well, I'm guessing that probably maybe not 100% agree with 100% of every word on the page, but with any collaborative process, I think for the most part, the general concepts are sound based on the work that we've done together.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Alderman Dolnick?
Mayor, is it, your vision that in the future, if we pass this, that when a project or proposal comes to the council, there'll be answers to those four items, those four questions, as a matter of course? And then if that's the case, then my question is, is it necessarily fatal to the proposal if the answer to one of these is no? Maybe it doesn't relate to the strategic priority or?
So the first answer is yes. We, I do plan on seeing this, and really, that would be for any kind of project or proposal that comes up to us. But I don't think it would automatically mean a death knell to that project. I mean, really, that's up to this board to decide, you know, how important it is. If it doesn't match one of those four very broad strategic priorities, that might be okay. It depends on the project and that discussion. And we had that conversation with Jay. I mean, he's prepared that if something doesn't jive with those strategic priorities, but he still believes in it, that he's still ready and willing to come up to the podium and say, yep, we still need to pass this, and it's important.
So will there be like a strategic priority worksheet in the agenda? Not worksheet, but laying out in the agenda how it applies or doesn't?
Yep. And then that's up to Jay to figure it out, but I don't know if he needs to stick to a worksheet, but...
Yeah, whatever you want to call it, yeah.
Yep.
So there would be an expectation that everything that comes before us as a project will have answered these questions before you or Jay bring it to us?
That's the hope.
Is there any plan to go back and review the full verbiage? I wasn't aware that the presentation we got last week was, was, you know, agreed upon verbiage. I mean, there was a, there were a couple of meetings, but it wasn't the back and forth. There was a meeting and then a survey, and then another meeting by a different audience and a survey from that. But I didn't get a feel that, that we, I got the impression going into this, that there would be some back and forth, that our one in-person meeting and survey was sort of the end of our involvement in the verbiage.
I mean, maybe Paul can address it as much as he can, but the, we're kind of restrained with the amount of time and in-person interaction that we could do with technology. And I know Paul did a good job of trying to send out different surveys and different ideas to get that functioning. I mean, if the majority felt that a certain line or something needed to get changed, that's fine, but I would acknowledge that this has been a collaborative effort, and as Paul said, not everybody's going to be happy.
Mayor, I just, just a quick question or pointing clarification here. When you're saying implementation, and I think this might answer Alderman Allen's question, it's not that it wouldn't necessarily come before the board if it was a no on one of those four implication, implication points. So like, does the proposal support one or more of the four strategic priorities? If yes, how? If the answer was no, it doesn't mean that, that automatically Jay or Chris like strikes it down and it doesn't come before the board. It's just that they would then, in their proposal, say, you know, based on, we're proposing the bike loop, you know, yes, it does meet one of our strategic priorities. It does relate this way. No, it has a, you know, no financial impact, but yes, Jay recommends it. Like, I, that's how I view this process going. I don't know if I'm incorrect, but it's not that we would strike it down before it even came before the board, correct? It's just a way to kind of have a set of questions that, that he automatically is answering in his proposal?
Yep.
Okay.
Alderman Dolnick?
Paul, is, in your experience, do other communities do what is being suggested?
Yeah, I think as far as following implementation of the agenda, yeah. So like Washington County, for example, has a somewhat similar process for having, lack of a better word, a worksheet that staff completes so that when the gen item comes to the county board, the gen package includes how, what the policy question is and how it relates to the county's strategic priorities. So just as someone mentioned, that it's not a way to filter items getting to you on the common council, but it's a way to help frame the discussion, recognizing that a strategic plan is a living, breathing document, and the community's continually changing. So there needs to be that built-in flexibility that if something comes up and it's an immediate need or something that you need to focus in on, of course, it's up for the common council to discuss it in a way that merits against the strategic plan that you have now. And sometimes those items are more important than maybe was initially realized in the strategic plan. Also, with mission and vision statements and planning documents, they don't have to be put on the shelf and left there. You can revisit them, and we can update them as needed along. So although we are limited on the last six months with our in-person gatherings because of the pandemic, and maybe we didn't have as much interaction back and forth as we originally had thought, I think we had a fair amount, especially in the, in the additional follow-up surveys. But we can always tweak things as we move forward as well.
Any other questions?
Knowing that this is just a framework and will give us more answers to questions, I would move that we accept the strategic plan.
Thank you.
I still have questions.
Go ahead.
So this, my question would come before the motion. Was there any thought given to including employees? You've added department heads, you took elected officials, and you took invited community participants. I believe the framework called them leaders. Was there any open call to people in the community to see if anyone not a community leader identified by, I guess, Paul and you? But were there any open calls? And was there any attempt to bring in employees? In other words, non-department heads to provide input to this?
Well, we wanted to make sure that the scope of the people that we were asking weren't overwhelming either. I mean, we talked from as narrow of a group as just being our council. We floated a survey to, floated the idea of sending a survey out to all employees as well. But how we got to that final answer, I think is probably a compromise, right, Paul? I mean, we had a lot of ideas of who we'd include in that group.
Yeah. And the compromise, the compromise based on time and also cost. So, and the pandemic. So the more people involved in the process, you know, doing a community visioning session could have been possible if we could have had, you know, hosted meetings with large numbers of the public. Doing more survey work could have been possible, but then, you know, that adds time as well as expense to the process.
And I should say on the citizen aspect, and maybe Jess can point to it, but we do have a, the first piece of a citizen engagement survey that was sent out. Can you share a little bit about that, Jess? As much as you can?
Sure. It's sort of in tandem with this process, I guess. We have initiated the assistance of POCO, which is the National Community Survey, and they're currently in the process of surveying our city and scientific sampling of households. And we haven't yet received the final data, but we've already hit our numbers in terms of the response rate that they're hoping for. So that's excellent, and we'll have a lot of information to share from that.
And the first phase of that was just a random selection, but then the second phase will be that's opening up to any other citizens who want to participate, correct?
Yep. So in the next few weeks, we'll get a link that will be posted online and on our website, and we can share to our constituent, you know, emails for anyone in West Bend to participate and provide feedback. That, that data is kept separate from the ones that are sent to specific household addresses, but we'll be able to at least draw a lot of conclusions from it, and then compare it to that of the strategic plan and make sure that they are in alignment or not, and go from there.
Yep. Sounds good. Do you have any questions?
I guess, again, my question that hasn't been answered is how did, how was the citizen input, in other words, the citizens, the non-elected officials who were in the meeting, how were they invited?
By my invite.
Okay, so it was entirely your choice on who those would be. So they, they aren't necessarily representative of the city?
Well, I would argue the mayor leads this strategic planning process, and we, you know, we made sure that we had feedback from all parties as well. There wasn't an overwhelming amount of citizenry that were appointed that would outvote, I would say, any group, whether it was the department heads or us. It was just people who were interested in getting involved and approached me prior to this process starting. But I did feel it was important that, you know, we, we still get that community engagement and that information, and that's why I think those surveys that Jess had mentioned are important. And if we get, if we get a lot of feedback through those surveys that maybe want us to pivot or change the direction of this document that we're approving tonight, then I think we should have that conversation because the majority of our population has spoke about that. Any other discussion or questions? Now, those who do have a motion by Kennedy, second by Kayler. Now, those who do have a motion by Kennedy, second by Kayler, I will call for vote for adoption. All those in favor, send a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. Thanks, Paul. We can let you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move over to number three, operator's license for Kelly Lynn Murphy, and I'll be looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Michael, second by Kayler. I'll bring up if there's any other questions for Ms. Murphy. Alderman Dolnick.
Actually, there's a question for, well, I don't know, if either of you can answer, Steph or Tim, Captain Deering, does, do either of you happen to know, does a Conamoc have a different criteria than we do?
I don't know, other than I'm sure she, I'm sorry, I don't know. Other than perhaps she probably went before a governing board, much like yourselves, who have the ability to make a decision. I don't, I would assume the criteria for review is governed by the statutes and our guidelines, so they may go back further, they may go back less. I don't know, I'm sorry.
West Bend follows the League of Municipalities recommendation, which is five years, so, you know.
Stephanie maybe has some input?
You just have to remember, it was at the Hilton, so she wasn't operating by herself. She had other licensed operators on premise. So that's why I questioned where she was working. I was also concerned with her testimony about working at the Solon Royale because they don't have their license yet. They shouldn't have any alcohol inventory there, so I wasn't sure what she was talking about inventory. That was my only concerns with, but you have to go on what her background was and her previous records, so.
Any other questions?
One point of clarification, the common council did grant their license. I have not issued it because I am missing documentation, one being a seller's permit for that license. So I cannot issue it to all of their, their premise that they show me that they have a premise license or some kind of control of the premise and seller's permit. I'm not sure in all the documentation, I just know the license is laying there. And that is one of the $10,000 licenses, it's a reserve license. So that also has not been paid for.
Which place is that?
The one that you just approved, I believe it was last meeting or might have been the first one in December. It's Solon Royale. It's where the grasshopper was previously.
That's the place where she says she's going to be the manager?
Right, that's correct.
I just wanted to mention, for the council's information, that the threshold becomes higher once you grant the license, there, if, if, if there is an alleged violation later, to suspend or pull or refuse to renew an existing license, they're entitled to due process, they're entitled to demand a hearing. So I'm not saying necessarily that means you shouldn't vote again, you shouldn't vote against this, just a matter of that you all are aware of the difference between what we have now and what could be later.
Thank you for that. Ian?
I did follow up on Conamoc's ordinances. I don't see anything as elaborate as what we have specified. They say you have to qualify under those, you know, under the statutes, which are basically reference of felony. You know, it's the, they're pretty vague in the statutes. We define a little bit better, I think, define years, such just to give it more framework and to provide framework under the Fair Employment Act.
Alderman?
This is for the city attorney, is, has, has there been anybody contested our guidelines? The five years seems reasonable, especially for somebody who's had a series of violations that would call into question. I mean, we're only talking two, two and a half years ago for the most recent one.
So, I think the general guidelines usually run between three and five years when they define them. The restriction on that is the Fair Employment Act. Again, you can't go back to something that was done necessarily in like 1985 and say, oh, you got an OWI back in 1985, sorry. So there are some restrictions on that. I think five years is well within the norm. That being said, it's, it's a guideline and it's a lookback period and, you know, I, it is always a deliberation when a license is denied. So it's not like it would be out of the ordinary to approve one or to not approve one. It kind of goes both ways based on the facts and circumstances presented. So it's not a bright line that, oh, there was an offense within five years.
Alderman Kayler?
Oh, sorry.
Trying to clear my throat at the same time.
Just want to point out, I know in the past, when I served last time, we had approved a couple of these controversial licenses and gave people a chance. I am not aware of, and maybe Stephanie can speak to it, of any of these that we've ever had to pull or suspend or try and revoke. Is that correct?
Randy, I'm sorry, can you speak a little more clearly? A couple of us can't hear you back here.
We've approved a few of these in the past, of these controversial licenses, and as far as I'm aware, we've never had to revoke or suspend one. And I don't know, Stephanie can maybe elaborate on that, if we've had to revoke any licenses or how's that gone in the past?
I can only speak for the last four years and I have not revoked any, but we have not approved any since I've been here either. That have been controversial in the last five years.
To, to my knowledge, we have not revoked one or suspended one since Karen would have taken over, which is like, what, 2012? I don't think we've had revocation hearings on a license, possibly one establishment.
Any other questions?
It would have been nice to have the ability to actually question the applicant under, in the council. Only the licensing board had that opportunity.
I think she might have been confused about what was going on.
They get confused, I think. We have to remind them that this goes before a full council. They do that often, they walk out, think, okay, I'm done, not realizing we have to approve this.
Right, right.
And to be fair, I did talk to her before all the meetings, and I asked her to stay, and then I asked her to stay again, so I guess.
Yeah, I heard you the second time.
So we do have a motion to approve on the floor, the second. If there is no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the license, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. I'd call for a roll call.
Yep. Steph, can I have a roll call vote?
Alderman Butchlook?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Nay.
Alderman Berquist?
Nay.
Alderman Kayler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
No.
Alderman Mottel?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Yes.
Aye.
So motion carries for three.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to number four, discussion of the process for appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. This was asked to be placed on the agenda by Alderman Allen, so I'll let him start that discussion.
Yeah, we had a, we had a situation at the last council meeting where it got a little contentious because there was a appointment that was pushed through at the last minute. And when I say the last minute, I, the, the, the reason for the appointment was a late afternoon resignation by a serving board member on the library board. And that, that forced that, as well as the appointment, into Friday evening, the first, the first I had seen of that was, would have been Monday afternoon because I had already done my, my preparation for the council meeting Friday, prior to the time the agenda was amended. So we had no time, or I had no time. I'm sure everybody else was fully aware of it and did all their, their background checking and decided it was an appointment they wanted to support. But I felt like there was no reason we needed to treat that as an emergency. And, and so I would basically propose that the noon Wednesday cutoff for the agenda, which we're told is, is a, is a real thing, would apply to appointments, that we not get an appointment made Friday afternoon or later for, for any of these appointments.
Just a question to Ian, were we, did we do something wrong? Was there more, were, were we out of illegality? My understanding was what happened was absolutely legal.
The Wednesday at noon.
To amend up to 24 hours, et cetera.
So the Wednesday at noon guideline is put in place by the administrative staffs, by the clerk, by the administrator, to make sure that people are submitting their documentation. In, in general, actually, it's supposed to be at least an agenda item, it's supposed to be submitted even earlier than that, so that it's on the preliminary agenda when it comes out earlier in the week. But the noon deadline is put in place to make sure that the vast majority of documentation is submitted, is in the system, is available for council members to review in a timely manner so that things aren't put in at the last minute. By statute, we have to give 24-hour notice, and that's typically treated as business hours. So the deadline to an amend, to amend for a normal meeting is Friday afternoon. It is, it happens fairly regularly that items get added late in the process because there's some reason that, you know, they, they came up on the sudden. We suddenly got noticed that somebody wants to close on a piece of property sooner than we thought and we need to get through the, the, the final resolution to approve things. You know, some of, some of the things, especially development-related, are in flux, those are always submitted. I will say from a committee appointment standpoint that I would not recommend binding anybody to the noon Wednesday deadline because you almost certainly will end up with a situation, I mean, let's take a recent event. When Steve passed away, let's say there was something absolutely crucial on the next plan commission meeting, and the timing had been such that we could have put it on the agenda, but it would have been a Friday afternoon amendment. I, I mean, even if, if it was a true emergency, we can amend with less notice. But let's say you had a situation where it was absolutely crucial to have the full board in place for whatever reason, and now your hands are tied by some artificial rule and you're like, well, I guess we're going to have to try and find a way to reschedule that meeting. I think it's inadvisable. The, the noon deadline is a general advisory, you're, is generally, you know, accepted as the deadline when things should be submitted in the normal course of business, but there's always the ability to amend. And if, and if the council doesn't like the late amendment, you can always choose not to act and choose to delay discussion on the item to the next meeting. It's in your discretion, you're voting on it, and you can always make the motion to delay because you need to gather more information.
I can see the council respectfully asking the mayor to please don't do things that last minute, but I think, I think he is right. If we, we binding ourselves like that, it's going to work against us at some point. There's going to be a, an issue that we're not going to be able to deal with because of that, especially like development issues and that kind of thing.
Alderman Dolnick?
This is just a question mark. Brett, you're on the library board, right?
That's correct.
Did this have anything to do with the timing of hiring or interviewing the, a replacement director?
No, I don't believe so because the circumstances, although I think some decision-making process took that into account, but it was determined that even if we hadn't acted, that person wasn't going to be involved in the interview process anyways. So, because he hadn't heard the first three candidates, so he wouldn't have been able to.
But, but if I can clarify, because I did talk to Deb Bartikowski about this too, while that person, while the new person wouldn't have been in the interview process, they, the desire was to still have somebody in place for January, so when you hire somebody, they have a full board that they can work with.
Would, would we have met that criteria had we acted tonight instead of last, two weeks ago, the last meeting?
I guess so, but again, that wasn't up to my discretion, it was the library board president. And, and to be frank, there, this was an unordinary situation, there was more to it that I'd rather not drag a past appointment, appointments dirty laundry out here in the public forum. But the, the situation meant that we needed to have a replacement ready to go, and the timing just worked that that happened to be on Friday, Friday evening. I'll add that the normal procedure that my predecessor did, and I would like to continue, is that we held interviews for library board candidates with the, with the board president. So and under any other situation, that's what I plan on doing. This is just an unordinary situation where we needed an appointment.
I, I am, I for one do not want to, you know, handcuff us, but by the same token, I, I felt like this was railroaded. The president of the library board could have, you know, come and testified either remotely through Zoom or come into the council chamber and, and stood there and said why they felt that they needed that appointment made that rapidly. So I felt like the, the whole thing, I mean, I, I received a lot of people, a number of calls that basically objected to, to the surprise of getting a new board member with, you know, appointed for that. So I, I would have felt a lot, a lot more comfortable with the process had it not been a complete surprise. I had no way to vet the guy. I mean, I quite literally found out about it when I logged on and noticed that I had a brand-new agenda, you know, popping up. And it wasn't that I didn't prepare, I prepared, but I prepared Friday afternoon. I just didn't prepare Friday afternoon after this guy chose to absent himself from the board.
Yep, I understand. Yep, Alderman Dolnick?
I'm trying to think back, you made a motion to table, right?
I, I did make a motion to table.
Okay, and it died?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so there was a process in place if the rest of the council agreed with you?
No, I'm, I'm just saying that, that this didn't need to, to, you know, if, if we had simply had a process, we, we heard from the mayor just now that, that we would like to have had, you know, some kind of an interview process ahead of it. We obviously didn't do that, you know.
But that specifically, that's the mayor's prerogative, because the mayor has the ability to make appointments, and I would say every board and commission is different. There's some like the library board where the board president really wants to be involved, and there's others like the, I'll tease the Park and Rec Commission where I don't think I've heard, heard from him once. And that's okay.
Actually, on the Parks and Rec, we need to, I noticed that the current membership is, is not in agreement with the municipal code.
I'm on Parks and Rec, I don't understand. I believe we amended it to be up to two older persons. We have one older person, which is myself.
Actually, it's two and five. It's two and five, it used to be one and six.
I thought it was up to two.
Yeah, because I thought we had checked that prior to everybody getting reappointed. We'll let Ian do some pass checking.
The municipal code does not agree with the website. Website says one and, one and six.
Point of clarification, when we allowed for two aldermen to be on the park and rec, it was at the common council level only, it was not done by ordinance. So it, it reverts back to one and five, did you say, one or six? As soon as there doesn't have aldermen. So unless the council goes ahead and say, all right, we still want to have two aldermen on the park. all right, we still want to have two aldermen on the Park and Rec, you have to do it at a council level. You have to go back to what your law was, and that would be the municipal code as it is written now.
There was an exception made because Alderman Kennedy was on the Park and Rec Commission when she was appointed to alderperson, and there was a one-time exception made at that point to allow her to remain on the Park and Rec Commission and have two alderpersons there, with the intent that it would revert, I believe.
That, that may be the case, but right now, the municipal code reads that it's seven, two alderpersons and five citizen members. And it was amended April 25th, 2020.
So we did do an ordinance change?
It was, it was an amendment, yep.
Okay. And Mark, if I can just piggyback, because I do think the larger concern you brought up that I've asked Jay to look into since I've been here, is that I do think we needed to do a recodification and a cleaning up of our ordinances. So I did put that on Jay's radar. He asked to wait until the new year, when he was a little, when things calmed down a little bit. So I know that's on Ian's radar, that's on Jay's as well. So I hope we can go through that process and we'll catch those, those items like you brought up.
Anything else on this specific item?
If Alderman Allen is so inclined, he could take my spot on Parks and Rec if, if he's so concerned. I really mean that. If, it just seems like you're very concerned about having an extra person or not an extra person, do you want to be on Parks and Rec, Mark? Is that the issue here?
No. No, the issue is, we should have two alderpersons on there, or we should take action to amend the municipal code again.
Perfect.
We amended it to, to allow you to take a position and then, and not take Alderman Hugaster's position. But given that we amended it, then we should have amended it, or we should have appointed an alderman to fill Alderman Hugaster's position, not a citizen member.
Yep. And I'd agree with that. I mean, that's, that's a good point. Thank you. Anything else on this specific item? Otherwise, I'll open it up if there's any announcements for the good of the order. Anything? Nothing? All right, well, this is a quick meeting. Having no further business, I'll adjourn by the call to chair. Have a good night.